Hold on.
All right, we'll call the order of the meeting of the Town Board of Supervisors for the Town of Sebastopol Monday, November 18.
I'm sorry, can you hold on for just a minute? I'm having a problem with the table. I think I better put a new table in. Sorry.
You all set?
I am, thank you.
All right, we call the order of the meeting of the Town Board of Supervisors for the Town of Sebastopol on Monday, November 18th at 7:45. Roll call to establish a court, please.
Supervisor Weidman.
Here.
Supervisor Teich.
Here.
Chairman Zipper.
Here.
Supervisor Wilfo.
Here.
And Supervisor Stavenas.
Here.
Okay, normally we go through the audience to find out who is here. We already accomplished that previously. So, public participation, I understand we do have a couple of guests that would like to address the board. Al and Lori.
You can do it from there.
My name is Lori Herberly, and I'm here on behalf of Herberly Farms Incorporated. I had talked to the planning committee just this last week in regards to, we are looking to build a fluid bottling milk processing plant where we bottle and sell milk. The location we are looking to do this at is in the Bellamy area. It's just north of, it's on 57 Main Highway 57, just north of Bellamy. Right-hand side, it used to be the old Garringer farm. And that's what we are looking to do. And we're looking to get a change. It's part of the cultural for the zoning, and so that's why we're looking to get everybody's, hopefully, participation and getting a variance on the zoning.
The variance is for condition use, or what?
Correct.
Yes, they have to go through the variance.
And everything. They have a lot of stuff to look at. They were just looking for support from the planning commission and from the town board so that, to see if it was feasible for them to go forward.
How big a footprint might you use of that property? I don't know how big it's going to land, 40, 80, 100 acres, or?
It's 100 acres.
So, you would use the existing footprint of the structures that are there, basically, or?
It would be a new structure. And it would be as tiny permits and money permits in the future to clean up the other structures that are not of use. And it would be just north, there's some cedars there, and it would be just north of that. There's some little hills or valleys in there that we don't know. From what we think from soil and water, that the soil there is pretty deep. We haven't done soil testing yet, but that's to come in the next, hopefully.
And your plan is to develop this one, or?
We are hoping to develop and open this hopefully by next June, July.
Very good.
2014. And we'd like to put a retail store with that also, to sell the product, the dairy products. And as time comes, we hope to, you know, add a few extra jobs in the community. It may only be, you know, three or four at starting point, but it's a thing to add into the community also, to get more people in the area.
Thank you. Anytime we can have business opening in our town, it's much appreciated. Anyone else have a comment?
They came in front of the planning commission, and we suggested, you know, the high-capacity well, which they said they already have, and then get all permits and licenses to be obtained. But they really wanted to know that if they went through all this, that the town would not just say, "We're not for this." So, the planning commission recommended that they do all these proceedings and then come back. And we voted to say yes, to recommend to the town board to take a look at it.
Okay.
To take a look at.
Yeah, to see if you're in support of it. They have to go through some hoops with soil and water and get a variance permit and all that stuff, yeah, before they come back to us. But they wanted to see if we supported.
Whether the town board has any major concerns or objections to the process that they're starting?
So, help me, because I'm not a, I buy milk and I drink it all the time, but it comes in cartons at the grocery store. So, you're talking about milk processing, you would then bring unprocessed milk in tanker trucks to some, how big a square foot kind of facility, roughly, right?
I'll, I'll, I wasn't smart. But we're taking the milk right from.
It could be right somewhere.
Right, yeah. Instead of telling the hall or place or whatever, we're just going to keep that whole pool. Because we have no hormones in the milk, nothing like that, and you want to come in last time.
Yeah, they're wanting to sell milk, make yogurt, frozen yogurt. They're not going to do cheese at this time.
So, it's going to be a relatively small operation.
It would be smaller, and we go see the, we see the milk on Friday. I wanted to go through, start the zoning part versus what the last part.
And she said that if you would like, they would deliver the milk to your house, so you would not have to go out there.
That's what I mean by question, I mean, for someone to carry them.
And it's something that we would love to start up, to do that.
There's other places outside the state that are going by.
Very good. Excellent. Good luck.
So, there are no objections from the town board?
I didn't hear any.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am not.
What would be a good, advisable thing, speak with the planning committee once we start getting more plans and building designs, because I have no problem showing.
Once you, once you go for the variance, then you would be notified of that variance.
Okay, you will be notified.
Yeah, the first stop will be the county.
County first.
They do our zoning for our town, so then after that you can, you'll get the town inspector involved or something. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Sorry we had to keep you in a bandage.
No, that's okay, I apologize. I have to leave, I have to pick up my daughter from Jackers.
That's all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Good enough.
She hasn't been successful.
Thank you.
Yep.
Don't forget your hat. Wore your hat.
Okay, the agenda has been properly noticed?
You, Casper.
Motion to adopt.
Do we adopt the agenda, November 18th, 2013? Second, I'll have to make out with eight o'clock.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. The vote. And approval of minutes would be next.
We approve the minutes of our October 21, 2013 meeting.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Financial report, October budget versus the actual and fund balance and the transactions to date. Do you have questions or comments first, otherwise a motion to accept.
Can move that we accept and put on file.
Second, okay. No further questions or comment, all in favor, say aye. Aye. World committee reports, do we have any? And it is part of your budget, was his own, tourism zone meeting of September 19th, and the plan commission of September 12th, and also October 21st.
I do have one question perhaps I could ask.
Yes, sir.
Just any feedback from the county on how many people got back in touch or filled out the forms from the meeting, and any timeline from that?
There was an email that I read last night that they are still getting phone calls. So, as far as the number, no. So, hopefully there's a lot.
What's curious.
There was some hangup too, as far as.
Yeah.
People that didn't get surveys.
We had one gentleman at the committee meeting that they said that they had to get it from the town, he came from the town. Linda said he had to go to the county. Victoria was going to call on that, and she's out of town, she has a little father, so I did not get her for 21. So, I don't know how many are actually out there.
Okay, I'm just curious if you have anything to say.
Okay, license and permits, it looks like we do have some building there in town, namely about a level of different parcels, including about three dual homes. Likewise, the independent inspection limited activities and the billing recap. The last page that you do have there, the municipality, they did have to come up with a commercial letter to the owner and also a review and pictures and letter again on the same issue without charge. That's an FYI. New business items, and we get down to our petition for a grant of variance with Jonathan Hurley. And you're Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay. Came before you, John, you applied commission.
Yes, Mr. and Mrs. Hurley, we're both there.
You want to give us the what for?
Yeah, they want to construct a 28-by-33 detached garage. It's within 40 feet of a town road. And if you count out the pages and turn in your packet to page 11, it's the map that shows their.
This is on Lori Lane across?
It's on Lori Lane on one side, and Bay Shore, County B, whatever you want to call it, there's like five different names for it. And they, are you all on that page?
Which one did you want us looking at?
The map, right there, the map that you're looking at.
All right, yeah.
Proposed garage on the right side.
Proposed garage on the right side, correct.
Is that the official license survey that it marked up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we need glasses now. The buildable section there is like 10 feet on one end, and was it 12 feet on the other end there, or 10 on both ends? So, the setbacks from the middle of Bay Shore Drive is 75 feet, which they made. And there's a rock ledge that, that zigzag pattern there is a rock ledge that's about six feet high. So. Oh, 16 feet, I'm sorry. The only feasible place is to crowd it to Lori Lane, which is a dead-end lane, and I don't know how many cars you actually think go down that for days.
There's plenty of people that live there.
There.
Apparently low traffic.
Right. So, do you have anything else to add?
Not in particular, other than, I guess, what the land survey shows is probably the best thing for you to look at. We're kind of cornered into that one zone of our property, built garage, and we sure like to make this a fire residence, having a garage with lots of cool air. So, just asking, would you consider it? If there's any questions?
This was the Richards property before?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have a recommendation from your committee?
Yes. Our recommendation to the town board was for the approval of the 26-by-33 proposed garage. And it was in favor five to nothing, so. What's that?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, yes.
Okay, any other comments?
No, it's, that lot can never be broken off, you know, and made a separate lot. So, that was one of the questions that we had at our level, so.
Yeah, I read the information from K.
Okay.
Looks like it was pretty straightforward.
Right. I make a motion to recommend to the RPC for approval of the 26-by-33 proposed garage.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? Very well, all in favor, signature purpose, say aye. Aye. Good luck, good, thank you.
All right, very much, thank you. Now you've got to go to the RPC. I'll be receiving. Yeah, you'll be receiving.
Did you want any of these that you don't have to make anymore? For copies, or?
I've got a lot of copies.
No. All right, thank you. Management of the Beech Park Disease in Wisconsin. I can tell you that I was summoned to a meeting with Don McKinnon from the Whitefish Dunes State Park, and also Pottawatomie Supervisor, or whatever. Now, October 28th, and enlightening was the fact that we do have a Beech Park Disease problem, and they assume that it's going to really.
Demonstrate.
Expand, and within five years, we are really going to see a whole bunch of trees that are going to be affected.
Beech fir wood.
I'm sorry?
Lot of Beech fir wood.
Yeah.
That's all right.
What they were intending to do was Chris from, the county forester, right?
Right.
Was there, and he and Bill were going to be marking the trees that would be affected. And the purpose of bringing it forward is that not everybody goes through there on Cape Point Drive and then says, on Shower Road, and then said, "What's happening to our Cape Point Park?" So, they apparently are going to go into a timber harvest, they're looking now for prospective cutters or whatever. They're going to go to a right-of-way, 75 feet from the center line. They intend at one time or another, when the logging takes place, that there would be a flagman, or they would shut off to quarter. They, they're hoping to get most of this accomplished in spring, and then nothing from July until November again. So, it's a situation that they do need to get at immediately, as I think Chuck, you told me that it's expanding way north, writing, or who did?
It is expanding. I mean, it's one of those, the scale helps support the canter that comes in, so very little part of scale, I mean, you'll notice very little scale initially, but the population builds up very quickly.
And I tried to encourage them to walk north of Cape Point Park and capture some of those trees that we don't, so we don't have to remove them on Shower.
Do you anticipate that this will have any impact on the $190,000 road we put in? Because that's going to be what they're going to use, right?
No, I heard that that was automatic, so. I was told about it.
You mean Shower Road?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, I meant that we just fix that road, are they going to come in as loggers?
Big equipment.
Take it apart?
Yeah. Won't sue them if they do.
Not anymore in the nurse room.
Okay, I don't have any other information, but it's going to be handled by the NER and also the county forester in bringing the information to the public. And I asked if I could share that with our group, being indicated, I'd be happy to do it, so. Next item, the Independent Inspection Limited Building Inspection Contract from February 1st through January 31st, 2015. If you had an opportunity to look through it, you will find that some of the per-hour charges have increased from $38 to $42, and as well. Yeah, $49 to $55 for anything. I don't know what the difference is. In addition, the fee schedule indicates a increase of about one penny almost all the way through. Give you an idea, it's a 12 cents per square foot on the floor area, and it currently is at 11. Erosion control currently at 75, and goes to $100. And the other way through, this is basically about one penny, except for the plumbing, which goes to $40 from 35. And commercial would go from 12 to 13, 13 to 14. 11 had $7, or seven cents. I have no other information, other than what Linda put on there.
I have a little. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Brett would have been here tonight, but he has another commitment, so he could not be here. I also talked to Gail DeLacy at Independent Inspections. She wondered if there were any questions of the board, she'd be happy to, to answer them. The only new thing under fees, other than the, the increase, they are not, they would now charge an occupancy permit. Currently, we do not charge for that, but the $30 would be incorporated on new construction to cover an occupancy permit. Otherwise, there isn't a whole lot of difference, other than minor increases in the fees.
Where was that?
The occupancy permit.
Oh, I see it here, okay.
It's on the exhibit one page, Lon.
Okay. Is Independent Inspections the only building inspection company operating in our county?
Pretty much so. The last one that was around was Roger Strig, and then he went on to be a state employee in commercial. I don't know of too many others. We share independent inspections with quite a few of the communities, Strig may proper, and you go all the way, wherever you go, Sister Bay, so. The only time we have any concern with their service is when they get down to the nitty-gritty and stick to their guns, and then it won't approve somebody that's not meeting the code. And of course, they get the blame, but if they were to do it properly, there'd be no problem all the way through. I entertain a motion that we approve the building inspection contract for 14 up to 131, 15.
I'll make a motion to approve the building inspectors, independent inspectors LTD contract.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Question or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. 2014 meeting schedule. We do have a, an election coming up April 1st, and we normally, when we do have those elections, we sometimes have the March meeting, or we do not. So, the TBA would be to be announced. And the rest of them fall in pretty well. The road inspection is open, waiting for John to let us know when he wants to do it. And the budget work section, again, would be something we can fill in later. The annual town meeting is April 15th. Open book dates and the board review have been already affirmed with May 30 for the open book and June 23 for the board review. If there are any other questions or concern, we can still look at it next month.
Linda, would you do me a favor and put a date on this thing?
Oh, put a footer on it, so that when we know which is the updated one?
Yeah, because as we change over time, we all have a different version.
I will do that.
Minutes, draft.
Draft. Yeah, just put the date created or something, so we're on the same page.
Okay, I'm going to date mine, November 18th. Okay, let us know if you have a problem with any of them. Next would be the notice of the spring election, April 1st. We have two incumbents, Dan Wumpel and Chuck Teich, to be reelected. Or to be again up for reelection.
Do you want to go back to that, the road inspection?
Sure.
No, it's too soon for us to change the date.
Well, we could put a, plug a date in for May, if you wanted.
All right.
Friday, May 9th is out.
No, so right away you gave us an update. You're supposed to plug in a date, not take a day out.
Yeah, well.
Road inspection.
Well, what? I'm going to be in a wedding that day.
Road inspection, you're talking about road inspection?
Road inspection, yeah. You want to go for Friday, May 2nd?
Friday, May 2nd, Mayday. Okay.
Otherwise, you want to go one pass.
Well, May 2nd, I'm doing all right.
All right.
The roads will be thought by then, it'll be good.
And that's on a Friday?
Yeah, I'll give you a Friday this year.
All right.
9:00 AM start?
Yeah, some people can't get up.
9:00 AM, okay.
Got to go too early.
Would you have bicycles this year?
No.
To get a better.
Only on your road.
Better perspective on the road condition.
There you go.
You can enjoy 78 miles of that. You'll get your road inspection done by November.
No, each of us.
Where are you going to be in October with the budget work session, or don't you know, John?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, very good. The next item would be the notice of municipal offices, which we took care of. The town park tree lighting ceremony established a date and a time. And that was at the request of your town clerk.
Are the lights still on the trees?
The lights are still on the trees. Maybe all you have to do is just plug them in, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
You are a dream.
Every year, usually, that just plug them in.
In fact, I have a.
The wind has a tendency of taking them and breaking them and smashing them.
I found them, I didn't, I never found these before, and I'm assuming I can find them again, but after, last year, where we're constantly replacing and repairing, I wonder if we should start from scratch. There is now a commercial-grade, heavy-duty, 100-foot length of lights.
We don't have any.
Is that in the budget?
It's not in the budget.
But, question would be, is, I mean, we can go at it the way we have every year, or strip them all off and put these industrial or heavy-duty lights on and kind of cut back on it.
I don't think 50 mile an hour wind cares if it's industrial or regular.
Well, it's a much bigger, plus a 100-foot, 100-foot length.
Yeah, right.
I don't care, just give me some idea of what you want to do, and we can work around it.
For your, for your information, we will be doing the inside tree Friday after Thanksgiving, and I already have my grandkids assigned as helpers and my daughters, so the tree will be up Thanksgiving Day weekend. And that's normally when you light the town park tree, so.
Thanksgiving.
That would be November 1st.
That's next weekend.
You're going to do it the Friday after?
The inside decorating will be Friday, November 29th.
When are we looking to?
So, whenever you want to do the outside.
We do it Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday?
We're doing the packer game Sunday.
You want to try that?
I got something going that, that Saturday, and I can't remember what it is. At least, I think I do.
John, are you going to be able to capture the?
I would think so.
Okay. Well, why don't we look for a date with you then? We could probably do something that.
Well, last year, we did a work day with you.
Yeah, we did a Friday, that worked out pretty good for me.
Well, you want to shoot for the next Friday? After that would be the.
December sixth.
December.
December, November.
No, we don't.
Friday, November twenty-ninth.
One o'clock?
Uh, that probably won't work. We're going home for Thanksgiving.
That's your house?
No, in Columbus.
What about Wednesday, the twenty-seventh?
Oh, no.
No, okay.
Now you're pushing deer hunting.
Do I take up all deer hunting?
What about, like, Monday, December second, or Tuesday, the week of December, first?
December second?
I could, I could do that.
December second?
I'll check on it.
Monday, December second?
Let's shoot for December second.
Monday, December second.
And what time do you go to work, John? Seven?
Seven.
All right, should we try for nine o'clock?
Yeah, sounds good. Is that outside or inside? This is outside.
Outside. Okay, tree lighting, December second. While you can help. Okay, the Republican Party list of election officials, and the reason why it's here, we normally receive from the Republican Party as well, the Democrats. And they give us the list of people that they would like to, for us to use as the poll workers. And this was the first year that at the tail end of the first paragraph, they said, "Please call in the order listed." So Linda and I had a conversation about this. We found out that the method suggested by Bill Burgland, the chairman, was that each time there was an election, and well, whatever. He would like us to start it. So the first one is a primary. We go to Mary Kenny, and then goes on. If we need three, then we go down. And then when the next election came up, we'd have to go back to the very first one again, Mary Kenny, Gail's on, and Carol White.
What is it our job to work through this?
Pardon me?
Is it our job to work through this, management of this list?
Well, it always has been that they give us the list.
And we just call.
And he called, she called, to get the next available, or someone who could work. The way it is being suggested by the Republican Party, the people that are five, six, seven, and eight, nine, ten, eleven on the list are never gonna get a call, unless we need that many voters or poll workers.
So does it say anywhere we have to do this? Because they gave us the list, that's the only requirement, I think, isn't it?
Well, the reason why it's here is I, the first time I saw the call in the order listed, and I believe by statute, they can ask for that.
I can comment on that if you want me to.
So then what we did is we asked Linda to go a step further and find out what perpetuated the change. And I think she might have some answers.
Okay, you got three minutes.
Oh, I have some, okay. I got, three minutes will be just fine. Just seems like everybody and their brother is becoming an expert on election proceedings lately, and it's really undermining the true democratic spirit of having an election and the election process. Anyway, although subject to change from time to time, Wisconsin statutes and the procedures outlined by our state elections board pretty much spell out what we can and cannot do. They're fairly clear, and they're fairly stated. In municipalities, each of the two dominant parties shall submit a list of appointees from their party. The party chairperson may designate any individual to be submitted as first-choice nominees. Likewise, the state elections manual, the list may designate individuals as first-choice nominees, those who must be appointed first. Our Democratic and Republican Parties have been submitting lists for many years with no designation as to first choice. Plus, we have a healthy list of unaffiliated poll workers for backup. Sebastopol is fortunate to have an adequate slate of poll workers willing to accommodate voter needs. As the clerk in charge of training, supervising, conducting, and tracking for our elections, the system has served us very well. I've tried to be fair and equitable to all of our poll workers, giving everyone the opportunity for training and working, so that all are kept current with the election process. The Republican Party, by its chair, Bill Burgland, has submitted its appointees for the 2014-2015 term with the notation, "Please call in the ordered listed." I have confirmed with Mr. Burgland that I am to start from the top of the list for each and every election, and that is the direction I will follow unless directed otherwise. So the burden is on the Republican Party. I will follow the order listed.
So who did you address that to?
I didn't address it to anyone. Addressed it to the board, I guess.
Do we actually, do we get a list from the Democratic Party?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
It's the same people?
Do we get a list from the unaffiliated?
I submit a list for unaffiliated. We have many, many people in our town. Like I said, we're fortunate to have so many people interested that want to work the polls, so.
But you did say the word "may." So does the word "may" mean that you have to?
No, you don't have to. They've never designated order before.
Good person, that's all I could say. I would go from the bottom of the list.
Nice, moving very well.
Moving very well. We got this extensive list from the Republicans. You get the same from the type, from the Democrats. Plus, you have independents, or. Who's training all these people and paying for that? To have that many people available?
Well, yes. I do pay them for training, and of course, they are paid to work the elections. Some of them do not request any payment. But you might get to the point where, especially in the wintertime, where half of these people might be down in Florida or Arizona, so.
If they're not going to be around, they shouldn't be on the list, I wouldn't think. I'm waiting for the Democratic Party.
Okay, did you make contact with the Secretary of the Republican Party, or?
I did make contact with her.
Was she in concurrence with?
She was uncertain as to how the order was determined.
Was she?
I imagine so is Bill. Yeah, she's not really good, she's politically correct. Okay.
So your direction is to follow the?
I think I will just send a letter confirming our conversation. This is my understanding, I will start from the top each and every time.
Yeah. Well, you might want to alert your people to the fact that your name has been submitted. However, the process might not ever get to you.
When the board approves the list of appointees at its December meeting, each of the poll workers will get a copy of that with the letters.
So that has to be done by resolution?
Correct.
All right. Final statement of assessment and statement of equalized value for 2013. I don't know where mine went, but there was none in my packet.
And there's none in my packet. There was no change from the previous.
All right, review and adoption of the 2014 budget. Are we gonna make any amendments to, or keep the total amounts as is? And do the manchuffals sometime later?
Work in progress.
Is that okay?
I would, yeah. But should we leave it for tonight and do the tweaking? Next time around, put the dust off.
Do we need some action here? Because we will have to work on your tax bill to be part of it.
I think I need something on the record to say that the board has approved the budget as noticed. Since we have not made any formal changes. Approved the budget as noticed.
All right, with the mill rate as suggested.
Just the budget, yeah. We just, the board, I just need on the record that the board accepts the budget as it is.
I'll make that motion, that the board accepts the budget as noticed in the paper and confirmed by the electors.
What you said, budget?
One million twenty-seven.
Nine hundred and eight dollars.
Before the night's over, we'll know all the figures. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
You're gonna vote no? All in favor, say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Yeah, it's carried. That'll be okay for you, Linda? Resolution for 2013 commitment on shower road renovation. We are anticipating that this is gonna be the requirement of the Wisconsin DNR. So we're going that route. The point four-four-seven miles are up in the air, could be something less, it might reduce the total dollar. But with the known fact that one forty-one total is pretty much what I indicated before with a twenty thousand LRI P, seventy-one DNR, and twenty from the Door County Parks Department, we would.
Well, I'm impressed that you got the Parks Department to step up.
Yeah, in second year, they did.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
Okay, thirty dollars, or thirty thousand from our town, I think would be a good venture. Usually, when the DNR needs to find out if there's support, we have these many agencies shipping in on the project they're going with. So the resolution to approve, unless you have a question?
Make a motion to approve for 2013 TB.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose.
Resolution to opposition. Senate Bill three forty-nine. All right, let's bring it forward and motion to get it on the floor. I need a motion to approve.
We approve resolution number zero five, 2013 TB. Resolution in opposition of Senate Bill three four nine relating to the regulation of non-electoral.
I couldn't have said it better myself. I'll leave a second now. All right, hopefully, you all read the information here. This is, really came down from the Wisconsin Towns Association. And for whatever reason, they want to toy with the duties of the towns and.
Pretty wide-ranging. I mean, it really covered everything but apple trees.
There you go.
Very much.
We don't. Okay, so it's before us, are we going to approve the resolution?
I would approve it, I would make a motion to approve it.
No, we already got it. So the town of Sebastopol would oppose. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. It's carried. Doctors Bill claims.
Established tax rate.
Tax rate. Established tax rate.
Resolution zero six, 2013, to be collected in 2014. So you want to insert the numbers again, one million twenty-seven?
The tax levy is six hundred thirty-four. Six thirty-four, one hundred and eighty-six. Tax levy was adopted at the special town meeting held earlier, supporting such total expenditures of one million twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eight. Is that what it was?
Yes, correct.
And then we just, okay.
Hill rate in support of what need?
That calculates out to zero point eight eight seven four nine four.
Good, good job.
Assuming the formulas are correct.
Okay, with those numbers, do I have a motion to approve resolution number?
Well, do we approve resolution number zero six, 2013 TB, establish the tax rate for 2013 to be collected in 2014?
I second that.
Now we have a second, questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's carried. You guys are too kind. Doctors Bill's claim, you have any? Do we approve? Or is it, do they go anywhere?
They're down here, everybody has signed. You didn't sign?
I signed. Eight years into it.
Okay, the correspondence, did you have any concern about anything that appeared? Did you do that, or?
I made the motion, I didn't hear a second.
To approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second Doctor Bill's claim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, carried. And the correspondence, was there anything in there that you felt you needed to take a look at? Fire department. And then the preliminary gas tax. That Raymaker Associates was for the car line. Door County Highway Department. If you guys want to hang on to that, if you are called, then you need to be in contact. Are you all listening here? Grab that sheet, hang on to it with your important papers. In the event you need to call for anything outside of regular hours, these are the people that are in charge by the week. And they'll gladly come here. All you gotta do is pay.
So if we, if we are contacted for snow plowing, we in turn will contact one of these people who's on duty?
Yeah, this would be, your normal contact will be at that house. But if it's outside of the regular business hours, these are the people that will be taking the call.
Judges are taking calls, okay.
Okay. The notices are, the close, the office will be closed for Thursday and Friday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. Sebastopol Historical Society has a party, Christmas party, December nine. Plan Commission meeting next is December eleventh.
That one might get canceled if we don't have all the information back from the county.
Okay. Yeah, next board of supervisors meeting is on the December sixteenth at seven o'clock. We have any agenda items for our next meeting?
Yeah. We might want to look into.
We might want to look into, the Hitching Post is closed now. We might want to look into what to do with that liquor license.
Yeah, we, they didn't turn in. Do you get that?
Well, actually, one of the McCollens did come in, and she indicated that the current operators have or will be leaving town. They would make, they're contemplating a change in agent, which they could do, because the license is in the name of McCollum Holding LLC. As far as being open and enforcing hours, that's up to the board.
Anything else? No other items, a motion would be in order to.
Triple second.
Yeah, a triple second. Thank you for your time. We are adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't even have to vote on.